Welcome, everybody, to the council meeting, Imperial Beach City Council Meeting of May 6, 2020. It's 5:00 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Council members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name right when you talk. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting on May 6, and thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. This meeting must comply with the Executive Order N-2920 and all other provisions of state law. We hope that everyone is at home safe and healthy, and we appreciate your cooperation with the stay-at-home order and other actions to keep you and your families and neighbors safe and healthy. The city clerk will announce the public comment process.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public can submit their comments on agenda items via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comments for that item is closed. Attention, members of the public, now is the time to submit comments for the public comments section or the consent calendar portion of the meeting. Please submit comments now via email for the public comment or consent calendar portion of the meeting. Please note in the subject line the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. And note that only the first 100 words will be read aloud so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Kelly. Madam, this is Mayor DeDina. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
Councilmember Sprig.
Here.
Mayor Protem Agiri.
Here.
Mayor DeDina.
President, this is Mayor DeDina, manager of City Hall. Will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone else, please mute your phone. Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands,
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is Mayor DeDina. Now, I'd like to invite every council member to speak, and the order is typically seated on the dais, starting with Councilmember Patton. But please, everybody, remember to announce yourself first, and then mute your phone when you're not speaking and when you're done speaking. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Beautiful day today. And Mayor, before we get started, I'm going to ask if normally during every discussion, I'm talking first. You asked, Patton, you want to talk first? I was wondering if you'd mix that up this time, so I don't have to go first every time. It's your choice, but it'd be nice to hear somebody else before I speak.
That's a great suggestion. I appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moving on, I'm on the Public Safety Task Force, which is a great task force with fire, sheriff, lifeguards, and we have a citizen liaison. We meet regularly, and we come up with some great things to help our city be safer. Right now, the fire, along with Tom Santos, is working on signs, both in English and Spanish, to remind people when they walk into a store to always wear a mask. And ladies and gentlemen, just remember, just have that mask on you at all times. It's almost easier just to have it on than to grab it and to put it on when you need it. So we're living next to a zip code that has a lot more cases of COVID-19 than we have, so it's really to our benefit that we follow these guidelines. Moving on, for the beach, the beach crowds are expected to be high this week, including today. Just remember, the beach, when you go to the beach, it's always moving. No sitting down, no laying out, no playing sports at this time. It's just always just moving. Lifeguards will give you friendly reminders. There's a northwest swell right now, and so that means the beach is open at this time. So it's all about education for you. And I want to give one special, huge announcement to Chief Robert Sabanow, who's been our captain for, I think, 25 years, and now he's a chief. And he is retiring as of tomorrow. Hopefully, we do a special retirement for him in the future. But Robert's been a huge asset to the lifeguards, and he's really made a lot of great changes. And I know for a fact, because I worked under him. So congratulations, Chief Sabanow. Moving on, Lieutenant Marquez from the Sheriff Department. Right now, there's seen about the same amount of calls that they did prior to or maybe two weeks ago, our complete lockdown or shutdown of staying in place. So things are kind of getting back to normal. So just to let you know, the sheriff's there for your help, and they're out and about in full force. Brian Brooks, our citizen liaison. There's been some larger crowds due to the bioluminescence in the evening time. So listen, if you're coming down to the beach to see the bioluminescence, respect the neighbors, respect the parking, respect everybody, always wear your mask, and don't leave trash on the beach. And I think, Mayor DeDina, that would be it from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Patton. Now, Councilmember West.
Good afternoon, everybody. I agree, it's a beautiful day in Imperial Beach. I just wanted to pass along a couple of things that have happened since our last council meeting. And first of all, as your representative of the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority, we had our special board meeting on April 16. And whatever you're reading in the news is true. I mean, the airport is really struggling right now, and it's a ghost town. In fact, I wanted to bring something up to you. On April 16 in 2019, we had 60,000 people that passed through the airport passenger-wise. And on that same date in 2020, we had 1,100. So the decline is real, the ramifications are unknown at this time. The airport is solvent right now and very, very in a good shape financially, but this is going to have lasting impacts. And then on the next day, we had our San Diego Community Power, which is our regional CCA with the cities of La Mesa, Encinitas, San Diego, Chula Vista, and ourselves. And I was really happy that we were able to choose two of our local rock star citizens, Mr. Tom Summers and Ms. Anna Webb, to our citizen advisory boards. These are people that are going to be advocating for how they want to see the community power rolled out in our community, and they are great people to be representing us. So there will be more opportunities, and I highly recommend that if you're interested, please get in touch with me. And on that evening, we also awarded River City Bank as our financial institution, and they made a pledge to me, which I asked them directly, to divest any of their investments from all fossil fuel companies. And they had two bonds. One immediately is done with Chevron, and then the next one will be done in 2021. So that was a great step to say that they're ready to embrace a green energy and a clean economy. So I congratulate River City Bank. And then, as the mayor's task force on COVID, small businesses lead, we have met every Monday since we're on our eighth meeting. But since our last council meeting, we've had people come from state and local to talk about all of the resources that are out there. We had State Senator Ben Weso, Supervisor Greg Cox, and Assemblymember Todd Gloria, and also Daniel Fitzgerald with the San Diego Small Business Administration. He was a really great advocate for explaining exactly what was available, what is the regulations, and all of the avenues that people need to go about to really apply for all of the CARES Act financing. I think this next one is really going to be a great one as well. We've got Jim O'Callahan, who is coming from the South County EDC, and we're really going to be opening this up, because I think, for those of you who do know, on Monday, the governor announced, and on Tuesday, the county followed, that they're going to be doing a soft opening of Phase II businesses on... The regulations will come out on Thursday, and those that meet those regulations will be able to open up on Friday. And what it really talks about is that the businesses that will be allowed to open for those, for that soft opening, are really centered around retail and many, you know, those businesses that are toy stores, florists, sporting goods, those type of clothing, those type of businesses, if they meet the state regulations, which are going to be driven from the county on Thursday night, that you will be able to do a soft opening on Friday. Now, that means you won't be allowed to have people come into your store. It'll only be curbside pickup for the foreseeable future. And I think this is really a test to see how we really maintain and watch how people are doing this, so we don't see a spike and go back into another COVID problem and we have to shut everything back down. So this is really a test run that I think the state is looking at. But if you have any questions, please reach out to me. And if you're a business and you are out there and you're not on our business task force email list or keeping up with us on Facebook through the mayor's task force page, please reach out to me directly. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. West. And now, Mr. Sprig, Councilmember Sprig.
Let me get unmuted here. Okay. Since our last council meeting, about almost three weeks ago now, on the 27th of March, I'm sorry, April 4th, my task force subcommittee, which deals with preparation, recovery, and sustainability, met, and we welcomed a new member, Joanne Gitman, who is our new Imperial Beach Director of Finance, or Finance Director. And she comes with a lot of experience, and she's a great addition to our city, and I'm delighted that she's on our city sustainability, et cetera, task force. I reported out earlier today at our larger task force meeting that our work is proceeding apace, looking at all the different economic factors that affect the city on both the revenue side and the cost side, and that we are on track to try to save about $1.7 million in expenses plus seeking additional revenues for a total $1.7 shortfall that we anticipate over the rest of this fiscal year, and next fiscal year, which starts on July 1 and ends on June 30. So I think we're on track. Andy Hall is going to make a detailed report on this agenda regarding those activities. On Saturday, the 2nd, I was invited as an elected official to speak at a Bay PAC, which is the Black American Political Association of California, meeting, because I drafted a letter for Bay PAC to the Governor of California that would ask the governor to address the great disparity in COVID-19 illnesses and deaths that affect the African-American and the Latinx communities in our state. And I believe that letter will be going out shortly. Let's see. On the 4th, which was just this week, the board, of which I'm a member of the League of California Cities, had a conference call with the governor's staff, and they went through all of the actions that the governor and the state are taking regarding COVID-19. And the League, of course, emphasized that it has a letter on its way to the governor asking for the governor to pass through funds to the smaller cities, which are not scheduled to receive money, from the CARES Act, which has a cutoff of 500,000 population. That letter, I don't think, has gone yet, but it's in the process of going to the governor. And meanwhile, the CARES Act is an effort by the National League of Cities to get the CARES Act expanded so that it covers cities under the size of 500,000, which might even reach now to Imperial Beach. We're going to hold our breaths on that one. So that's basically my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmembers Sprig. Appreciate all your leadership, especially on the statewide level. Thank you for that important issues. Mayor Protem Agiri.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Mayor Protem Agiri. I just want to thank Councilmember Sprig for that effort. I think that's incredibly important, seeing the statistics of how disproportionately affected people of color are, is astounding. So thank you for taking that initiative. So I will report on April 16. I attended the MTS Board meeting. We discussed budget. We approved the budget for the remaining of the year. We're looking good financially. We are being supplementarily funded by the last stimulus package from the federal government, which provided significant assistance for public transit agencies. However, we unfortunately will not be moving forward with the Elevate 2020 ballot measure that there was a lot of effort and investment and hard work from many different stakeholders. We were hoping to put that on the ballot in November, but for obvious reasons, that's not going to take place this fall. We are discussing postponing that effort for a better time when things begin to level out financially. I will just mention that MTS is taking every necessary precaution to provide safe conditions for riders. As you know, we provide an essential service. Our routes continue to carry between 25,000 and 30,000 riders per day, many of whom are, you know, essential workers, as I said, or go to medical centers and major hospitals. So what the additional measures that MTS has adopted is requiring all riders to wear face coverings. That was before even the county mandate, taking temperature of all the employees, and having passengers enter on one side of the bus and exit on the other, so that they don't have close proximity with the drivers. I will announce that the next board meeting will take place next week, May 14, at 9:00 AM. Please tune in if you can, and then we will have a public security committee too that same day. Now, as you all know, I'm the Chair of the High Risk Population Subcommittee for the Mayor's Task Force on COVID-19. We continue to meet regularly and move forward, trying to bring resources and, you know, services to those populations in our community that are in great need. We had a roundtable April 18. We had a couple of great speakers. We had the Executive Director of United Way San Diego and Alliance San Diego, who shared a number of resources available for our immigrant residents. And that has been... The video is on the mayor's Facebook page, so if people have questions or would like to access those resources, they can do so on that Facebook page. I also want to announce that this Friday, May 8, we're going to have a second virtual roundtable focusing on immigration with a special guest, Senator Ben Weso will be speaking, as well as Norma Chavez, who's the Executive Director of ACLU San Diego. And then lastly, I just want to remind everyone that there are a number of resources available on our website. As you all know, we started the new month, and rent was due, and if people have challenges, being unable to pay their rent, again, they need to inform their landlord for eviction moratorium. And we're also posting resources for mediation services. That means for folks who are having any type of dispute, whether it's their landlord or a tenant relating to any issue, they can call a number that we have listed on our website, that is the National Council on Conflict Resolution Center, pardon me, where they can provide that service for free for anybody who is in need of that. And then lastly, there's going to be a food drive this Friday at 9:00 AM, sponsored by Grocery Outlet at the Old Plank Inn. They hope to distribute up to 200 bags. That's this Friday at 9:00 AM at the Old Plank Inn. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protem Agiri. And thanks to all the city council members, our city staff, and then all the community volunteers, Mayor's Task Force members, who've done an extraordinarily leaderful job really addressing this humanitarian and economic and public health crisis beyond what the city would normally be capable of. So I know, we really appreciate that. And we know the economy is going to be a phased opening, but it doesn't mean that disease has gone away. So I appreciate the reminders that we need to continue to carry out physical distancing, wear a face covering, and obviously, with the original message, wash our hands and really get back to continue the vigorous hand washing, especially as we get out there more into the economy. As of today, the World Health Organization states that there have been over, according to the World Health Organization, there have been over 247, 533 confirmed deaths from the coronavirus disease. As of today, over 74,000, almost 74,000 in the United States, and over 150 in San Diego County. Today, UCSD researchers just announced that probably if we wouldn't have done anything like physical distancing and staying at home, there could have been up to 12,000 deaths in San Diego County, not including what would have happened nationwide. So let's honor all those victims with a moment of silence and keep those who are suffering from this terrible virus in our thoughts and prayers. Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate that. Just briefly, three areas of policy that I've been involved with related to this crisis. One, I worked really closely with San Diego Mayor Kevin Faulkner and then Beach City mayors and cities, and California State Parks, Support of San Diego, and U.S. Coast Guard have a uniform policy regarding beach openings. So the rules and regulations now that are established are uniform throughout the county. That policy and the phased opening of our beaches was lauded by Governor Newsom, and I think we saw what happened when Newport Beach and Huntington didn't carry out those types of policies, and now they are. So I appreciate all the support from our lifeguards, especially to make that happen. Number two, the other area of policy that I've been involved with is we had a press conference two weeks ago with South Bay mayors Alejandro Salta Feliz in National City and Chulavista Mayor Mary Solis, and then San Diego Councilmember Vivian Moreno, to talk about the need for much greater testing in South County and the disproportionate impact of the COVID crisis on our communities in the South Bay. We have the highest rates of COVID in the county and the potential impact of Mexico. That press conference and subsequent conversations with Supervisor Cox and Dr. Wooton and county medical and public health staff resulted in increased allocation of resources to South County, but we're additionally following up that on that. I want to make sure that those are, continue to be, that testing continues to be available in Imperial Beach. There needs to be more, but it's the only way we're going to get out of this crisis. It's through a policy of mass testing and then contact tracing and quarantine or isolation of the folks that are sick and the people that have come in contact with it. So appreciate our South County leadership on that, but more importantly, the county really did respond. And I found out last Friday, Dr. Wooton and Dr. Nick from County Health, and Dr. Nick, especially in county medical officer, made it very clear that their number one priority right now in the county is addressing the South County issue and that these testing resources will be made available. So they have been carrying that out, and I'm definitely convinced that they are taking this very seriously. The issue of border COVID cases is something that's reached the highest level of the White House, including Vice President Pence and Department of Homeland Security. So it's definitely, there's a lot of focus on addressing that, and that's why Imperial Beach needs to continue to be safe. We are surrounded. One, the city in Mexico, the highest number of COVID cases and deaths, and then the region around us definitely has the highest rates of COVID in the county. And then finally, in terms of the absolute beach crisis or pollution crisis that our residents are suffering, received numbers of emails and phone calls from folks that have been just made sick by the horrible stench, especially in the south end of town and then in South San Diego. I want to thank my council colleagues, who've all been very active in this, but that resulted in a press conference last week with Senator Ben Weso, Mayor Protem Agiri, Councilmember Sprig, Port Commissioner Dan Malcolm, and Councilmember from San Diego, Vivian Moreno. We were just trying to get the Mexican and U.S. governments to acknowledge there was a sewage spill. Up until that point, they said that all the sewage and water, which was about 60 million gallons a day, was the result of rain runoff from April 13, which obviously wasn't true. Because of the press conference, they changed the International Boundary Water Commission, then sent out a notice saying that there had been, of course, up to more than 30 million gallons a day of raw sewage, in addition to the other sewagees in the river. And they immediately started cleaning the PVC pump that pumps water out of the river. I had subsequent conversations with EPA Region 9 Director John Boasterod, two different conversations with him, and I'm talking to him tomorrow. He did commit to spending the $300 million for USMCA funds completely in the Tijuana River Valley, the U.S. side of the border, so that's good. He said Commissioner Wheeler is completely committed to that. I talked to Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor, she mentioned that the California Coast Conservancy tried to take $15 million from the state efforts to clean up the river valley, and she made sure that that didn't happen, so we appreciate that. Talked again to Senator Ben Weso, talked to officials in Mexico, talked to the U.S. Consul in Tijuana, and to really emphasize we need emergency repairs made. And so as of today, the flow level went down of 24 hours by 30 million gallons, so it's clear they put that pump station on. That needs to come down to zero. So we have a long way to go, but it's clear why we need a lawsuit, and that's because things are worse than ever, and the International Boundary Water Commission is more unresponsive than ever. So we have an average of over 400 million gallons a week of raw sewage coming into our ocean with the highest pollution levels that I've ever consistently seen in this city, because of the concentration of that. So I appreciate all the support on that, but we have a long way to go, and it's clear the reason why we're in court and why we need to keep pushing these guys to do the right thing, because it's clear they're not. So I've done numerous press conferences, I mean, press interviews in Spanish and English with Mexican and U.S. media to get attention, but our focus really is on Mexico to get those pumps repaired. I talked to San Diego Mayor Kevin Faulkner, and he assured me, he talked to the U.S. Ambassador, I mean, the Mexican Ambassador to the United States, Martha Barcena, who then announced that she got Mexican government to allocate 85 million pesos, I think three or four million dollars, to get those pumps fixed, and they assured me they're going to get the pumps fixed this month. So we move forward, but it really takes the effort of our entire city and city staff and council members to make that happen, so thank you. With that, just finally, Chief Robert, Lifeguard Chief Robert Sabanow is retiring today. Today was his last day. I know Councilmember Patton and I were there when he was first hired back in, I think, '83 or '84, and so that's over 36 years working for the city by B. He really transformed the lifeguard agency to one of the best in the county, with a very modern agency, arguably the best lifeguard station in Southern California, not the whole state. So really appreciate his retirement, and we're glad, we wish we were having a, we've had a barbecue with him today, but we'll make sure we do that in the future. And anyway, that's it for me. And just remember, council member and staff, mute your phone. And now I will turn it over to our Assistant City Manager Cortez for the announcement.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I have the pleasure to introduce Joanne Gitman to join our office or our IB team a couple of weeks ago as the Finance Manager. I was... I wish you can meet her in person. She is great, and I do have a picture of her up in the screen. A lot of you have met her through the Zoom or the GoToMeeting. So anyways, I invite you to join me and welcome her. I'm going to allow her just to do a quick introduction.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'd like to say it's a pleasure to join your team, and it's an honor also. So far, what I see, those I've met and the areas I'm already falling in love with, and I really look forward to being able to serve you for years to come. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Joan. Appreciate you being here. Now, we have an update on the Public Works, on the Imperial Boulevard project from Public Works Director Eric Minichelli. Take it away, Eric.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is Eric Minichelli, Public Works Director, just giving you a quick and brief update on the Imperial Beach Boulevard project. We'll move to Slide Two. General update, project completion looks like it's going to be around mid-June. We were aiming for the end of May, kind of Memorial Day weekend, but we had a lot of rains that hit us pretty good this spring. COVID hasn't been too bad. It delayed the delivery of some products, but for the most part, we've been able to work through that. Work's currently underway in all three areas of the project. We'll move to Slide Three. This is a picture of the east gateway of town. This is the glass inlaid concrete. This picture's probably a few days, maybe a week old, because we've since opened up traffic on this side of the roadway and it poured the other side of this feature. It takes 20, and once that got poured, I think on Monday, it'll take about 28 days. We have to allow it to cure before they put a sealer coat on that, and then we'll be able to open up the roadway both ways there at the east end of town. Moving on to Slide Four. Between Ninth and Thirteenth Street now, we've got a major detour going on as we do the grind and overlay of the roadway in that section of town. Slide Five shows what it looks like after it's been ground down. And then if we move to Slide Six, this is what the roadway looks like after it's been overlaid with the new asphalt. It's very quiet. We're already hearing from residents that the roadway is super quiet right now. Moving on to Slide Seven is some shots of the estuary area. We've got the Tijuana, the new signage there, the new electric ballard lights, and obviously the pavers there as well. All the aesthetic features are going in as we speak as well. So moving on to Slide Eight, shows the new bus shelter at Second and IB Boulevard. And then you've got a shot of a bench and the view looking south across the estuary there. With that, I have, I'm available for questions, I guess, but this is a presentation on itself.
Thank you so much, Eric, for that very brief and informative and strategic presentation. Really appreciate it. Very nice, very great project, and can't wait to have that all the way done. I know our residents will be happy about that as well. And now we have City Manager Hall with an announcement regarding Navy helicopter flights and a few words for Chief Stavenow.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to join the mayor and council in thanking Robert Stavenow for his great service to the community. He grew up here. He gave a lot of his life to the lifeguard service here in Imperial Beach and just really took it to a new level. I can't wait until this situation is over and we get to go out and have a gigantic party with Robert. But from all of the staff, and we've had a chance to talk about it, and we have some crazy things planned for you, Robert, when we get through all of this, we just want to say thank you and appreciate what a leader you've been and what a mentor to all of us. And so thank you for your service, and we look forward to partying with you soon. Mayor, we've had several calls from residents that are concerned or have noticed that there are more helicopter flights on the weekends. And so we wanted to let you know that the Navy has contacted us, and because of social distancing, they have not been able to make as many flights during the week as they normally do. So they've had to make up for those flights on the weekends. It's important that they remain mission ready, and that mission readiness requires them to make a certain number of flights and spend a certain number of hours training on those flights. And so they've had to extend those into the weekend hours. If anybody has, if anyone in the public or any council members have questions about the schedule, if you will send those to IBmanager@imperialbeachca.gov. We will forward them to the Navy Liaison, and they will be able to answer some of your questions. Right now, it's just for the foreseeable future, and as soon as they can return to a normal pattern, they will do so. So that's the announcement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I appreciate it. And now Assistant City Manager Cortez, do you have any comments? Received email for the public comment.
Yes, Mayor. We did receive comments. We have three comments. Comment number one from Kim Frink. She does provide probably a little bit more than 100 words, so I'll read what is for the record. Rapid Response Task Force update. 13 to 20 community partners and volunteers meet Mondays. The task force has moved quickly to address needs. Needs and volunteer survey distributed via social media posted on Mayor's Coronavirus Facebook page and Imperial Beach Neighborhood Center and SunCoast website. Over 300 residents responded and connected to resources. Needs are forwarded to COVID-19 Task Force as appropriate. Over 75 volunteers identified. 120-plus isolated residents are receiving regular check-ins from assigned volunteers. The Imperial Beach Neighborhood Center, working with the IBAC, Poki123 Grocery Outlet, and other food distributors and grocery gift cards, SunCoast offering $20 produce boxes and $20 to $30 free boxes weekly to those in need. Comment number two from Peggy Walker. Again, she provides more than 100, so the rest will be included for the record. As a youth health educator, I appreciate the pro-environmental and health policies IB have adopted through the years. In light of the November ballot initiative to increase marijuana businesses, I'd like to share with the public warnings against marijuana use, especially during COVID-19. CDC, American Lung Association, and other agencies warn marijuana use has caused lung disease and opens the doors to infection. It's not too early to remind citizens that more marijuana businesses are not in the interest of public health. IB has resisted these in the past and has been even more reason to do so in November. Comment number three, Barbara Gordon. Since I work with students, primarily Latino students, I'm concerned about youth marijuana accessibility during the pandemic. Recent American Lung article, quote, "Marijuana Lung and Health," unquote, states smoking vaping marijuana clearly damages the lungs and depresses the immune system, which affects the young person's ability to fight off the disease. I am already concerned about IB's one pop shop. However, the November marijuana ballot measure would bring more. So I hope that the youth and other IB citizens will understand how damaging marijuana uses and marijuana uses businesses are to the public, health, and our youth. Can the mayor and the council members assist in educating citizens? She provides a handout that will be added to the record. No additional public comments, Mayor.
Thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who provided public comment. We really appreciate it, and thanks for all your feedback to us. And now we have Consent Calendar Items 1.1 to 6. By the way, this is Mayor DeDina. Sorry, I need to announce myself. And Councilmember Patton has an announcement regarding Consent Calendar Item Number Six. Mr. Patton?
Did you have an announcement?
Mayor, this is, this is Manager Hall. I just wanted to let you know that Councilman Patton is seeking to recuse himself from Consent Calendar Item Six because he lives close to that project.
Okay, thank you. And then Assistant City Manager Cortez, do you have public comments received via email for the Consent Calendar?
Mayor?
You do, or you don't? I'm sorry, there was overlap there.
Mayor, there's no additional public comments.
Great, thank you. So that means the public comment period is now closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item. Should I, just a question on protocol, City Clerk Kelly, do I do Items 1.5 and then separate, have a separate thing for Six?
Um, I'll look under the record. Oh, you can go ahead and ask for a motion to approve Items 1 through 6, and I'll announce the recusal in the announcement of the vote.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items Numbers 1 through 6. This is Mayor DeDina.
It's Spriggs, so moves.
I second.
Was there? Okay.
Okay, this is City Clerk Kelly. There was a motion by Spriggs, seconded by a Gary, to approve Consent Calendar Items Numbers 1 through 6. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
I accept for Item 6.
Okay. Councilmember West?
Yes.
Councilmember Spriggs?
Aye.
Mayor Portemagiri?
Aye.
And Mayor DeDina?
Yes.
For Consent Calendar Item Numbers 1 through 5, motion carried unanimously. For Consent Calendar Item Number 6, motion carried by the following vote. Aye, West, Spriggs, Agiri, DeDina disqualified, Patton, due to a potential conflict of interest.
This is Mayor DeDina. Now we have Item Number 1, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution Number 2020-34 for Transnet Local Street Improvement Program, a project for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. I'm declaring the public hearing open, and Public Works Director Minichelli will give the report. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is Public Works Director Eric Minichelli. The Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of Projects is an item we update every two years. Our POP is very simple and straightforward. We split our funds between two projects, essentially a maintenance of effort, maintenance street, street maintenance operations element that takes about 30% of our funds, and the major street improvement, which is the annual paving project that occurs every year, and that's usually the balance of those funds. This year, there's an added project related to the traffic signal interconnection project, they call it the SR75 Signal Interconnection Project. But we've got a major staff report and further explanation of that project coming later this evening. But for now, Transnet's requiring us to include that within our POP pending what occurred later today related to funding for that project. With that, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Minichelli. Are there any questions from the city council? First, I'm sorry, let me back, stop that. Now is it, now is the time for public comment. So before we have council comment, we have public comment. City Clerk Kelly, do you have a statement to make?
Yes, this is City Clerk Kelly. We will take a recess of approximately three minutes to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this agenda item via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
I'm calling the meeting back to order. Assistant City Manager Cortez, do you have any comments received via email?
Mayor, we have no comments related to this item.
Great, thank you so much. Is there any city council discussion? And we will start in the opposite order, starting with Mayor Portemagiri. Any comments from anyone?
Patton.
Mr. Patton, you have a comment?
Can you hear me? Yes. I can't believe, I can't believe you didn't call me first, like, whatever. Okay, so this is it. When we do work on the streets, like, we have these beautiful streets, and Andy knows this, I don't call him very often for anything, but one of the things that chaps my hide is when we have SDG&E cable service, water service, they come, and they mark on our street, it could be a brand-new street, with spray paint all over the street. I mean, all over, like, crazy. I, I know for a fact, as a school teacher, where I use chalk on black asphalt, it'll last for two months. I'm just wondering, is there any way that any of these companies can use something that's going to dissolve, like, in a few months, rather than having their mark on our streets for six years? And I'd like Eric to answer that, please.
This is Public Works Director Minichelli. That's a good question. I, I don't know, I know that there's, there are liability issues with, that when they mark things down, they're typically doing it because of that, at a request of, like, big alert and that kind of thing, where their marks need to be in place so that when people do work again in those roadways, they don't hit these gas lines and whatnot. But I don't seem, think it would be very difficult to coordinate a meeting. We have quarterly utility meetings with CalAM, SDG&E, Cox, all of our utility providers in town. We could certainly bring up the idea of, hey, is there a way we can have you guys start to at least black them out after a while? I don't know that chalk would be something we would be allowed to be used, but they can certainly do some blacking out of existing marks once, once projects are no longer active.
Well, here's a little story. Next to my house, there was like a tiny little dip. Obviously, a water main or something was dipping down. CalAM or whoever filled it up. They, I counted 25 white marks around the whole perimeter, on the whole street, that they put for that marking to do that job. And the job's been done, but the markings are still there, and it's been three years. So almost, if they use black spray paint on asphalt, which isn't really black now, is it? It's almost gray, it would work. So all I'm saying is, if this is happening in other communities in Coronado, La Jolla, they wouldn't stand for it. It's almost like graffiti on the street. So that's one of my pet peeves, and if you could really follow through on that, Eric, I really appreciate it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd be happy to proceed with the comment. Any additional comments?
Yeah, Mayor DeDina, this is Councilmember West. So I wanted to, I wanted to concur with Councilmember Patton wholeheartedly. My street was just recently paved, and they came and replaced the pole, the telephone pole, SDG&E came and replaced the telephone pole, and, and spray painted a giant square around it. And it is, it's not a line, it was to notify which pole to be removed. And it is, it is a blight on the street, and then they have not done a good job at filling in the hole around it as well. So I definitely think that there's got to be a better way that they're doing, they're doing this. And, you know, we get these roads done, and then they look, they look terrible after they're, just shortly after. And I also think it goes back to a bigger thing that SDG&E needs to plan better, SDG&E and all of our utilities need to plan better when we're paving these streets, because it, it is, it, with coordination, we could do this better and make our city even, even, look even better than it does. So I, I'm, thank you, Councilman Patton, for bringing that up, too, because I, it's something that, it's a pet peeve of mine as well.
Yeah, but West, they, they also do it all over the sidewalk as well. And over by El Tapatio, it's almost like, looks like a rainbow of spray paint all over boxes on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Which, when I walk in other communities, I don't see that. And I'm wondering why it's happening, why, why is it happening here? And, like, we need to stop it. One reason it's happening is because we let them, we let them do it. If we put the brakes on it, I think they'll stop it, and we can make our community look even better.
Concur.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any additional comments? Great. Mayor DeDina, the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-34, adopting the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of Projects for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. What's it? Patton?
It's...
Sprig, second.
Second, West.
Great, City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote?
There has been a motion by Patton, second by Sprig, to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-four. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Sprig, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the feedback. Mayor, at this time, we will take items numbers one and two concurrently for reports. Number one is update on the city's response to COVID-nineteen pandemic, and number two is resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-eight of the City Council of the City of Imperial Beach, confirming the instruction by the Imperial Beach Director of Emergency Services and confirming the County of San Diego Public Health Order mandating face coverings for all persons two years or older, with certain metal exceptions. Assistant City Manager Cortez will give the report.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is the COVID-nineteen response update and some of the actions that the city council staff and we've followed through the county's orders. It's been a while since we had a last council meeting, so it's, uh, hard to track some of the actions that we've taken, but we were able to do as much as possible. Let's start with the limited reopening of parks. Um, parks have been open, um, to exercise, jog, and now recently, the county has allowed for park visitors to sit right down, even have a picnic with family members and immediate households, as long as there's also some social distancing involved. Um, so even members of the family or household can play sports activities, for example, like kicking a soccer ball or catching a football. Um, individuals of the, members of the families can also continue to use the parks for various exercises. However, it is important to, um, highlight that some items of the parks continue and remain closed, such as the park restroom, playground areas, active sport areas such as basketball hoops, skate park, and our fitness center at Dunes Park. Parking lots continue to remain closed, including street ends, and the dock park continues to be closed. Again, there is no social gathering. There are no special events being approved, such as birthday parties or major city events. And, um, people may, may, are still required to adhere to the social distancing, a minimum of six feet. We move into the beach opening. So the sand area is open for walking, jogging, and similar exercises. Although our parks, you may lay down and have a picnic, at the beach, you may not do that. You have to keep motion moving. Uh, the waterfront activities are open for, like, surfing and swimming and things like that. However, given the, um, city's, unfortunately, water pollution, that can be closed at any given time. Um, the pier maintains close, and there is no shore fishing, shoreline fishing. We want to take this time because, um, we don't want to just say, no, 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 you can't do that. We want to recognize and honor our community and thank them for adhering to these orders. We know that during the nighttime, it attracts a lot of people to the beach because of the violently limited. But, um, we feel that a lot of those people coming to the beach may not be I B residents, and they're just coming from other communities. So, uh, around our fog and gratitude for our, our, um, residents of Imperial Beach. These are two pictures currently taken. You know, the weather is really nice, and you can see they're spaced out and, you know, they're, they're, they're moving, they're moving along. Moving into essential and non-essential businesses, um, the county has provided a definition of who are essential businesses, and, um, members of the public and businesses may visit the county's website to obtain that information. Uh, however, it's important to remind them that there are certain businesses that still must remain closed. Um, it's, it's a long list, and so we prefer that they reference the county order for that specific. Again, we're not in a business to provide clarification, that is, the county, uh, um, they're governing that. So, and members of the public, we, we're, we're happy to facilitate that process, but members of the public and businesses should, um, reach out to the county directly via the orders posted online. However, those essential businesses that are, um, open for business are required to prepare and post a social distancing and sanitation protocol, and it has to be posted after facility or if it's a multiple facilities, multiple facilities. Um, all essential businesses open for business also must have their employees wear a face covering. Moving into face masks, effective May one, twenty twenty, all persons of two years old or older who are present in the county shall wear a face covering. When they leave their homes or place of residence, but, um, they're in, in, in an area or business that is a public entity or, you know, restaurant and things like that, that are picking up for food or bank, they also have to adhere to the six feet, um, the distancing. And if they are out and about and they are not members of their family, they should also be wearing the mask. Uh, one of the exemptions, exemptions is that anybody who is medically or mentally, um, not able to wear the mask because it, it warrants their condition, they are not required to, to, to wear the mask. Again, um, we want to thank the community for cooperating with this. Andy and I do not get out of the office that much, and I dragged him on Monday to take a quick walk. And, um, we were happy to see these signs on people's gardens and front yards and fences, encouraging the community to continue to wear the mask and help flan it in the curve. Um, the pictures are reflected on the presentation. Um, that includes our essential business, which is Public Works and Public Safety, which is the center picture. You see that everybody is adhering to the order. That moves me to, um, item number two, Mayor Council. Um, as you know, the, um, the city manager who is acting as the Director of Emergency Services may take, um, um, actions and then, um, come back to the council for ratification. So the timing of the order from the county as May first came after the city manager actually, um, uh, confirmed that, um, the masks should be, be worn for essential workers and members of the public. So essentially, what resolution number twenty twenty thirty-eight is doing is confirming the instructions by the Emergency Services Director, City Manager Hall, and then also confirming the order by the county, uh, by, um, health order by mandating people to wear the face mask. With that, if you have any questions, otherwise, that concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you, City Manager, City Manager Cortez. We'll, we'll go to public comment, um, first. Um, now is the time for public comment, and I know City Clerk Kelly has an announcement.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Once again, we will take a three-minute recess to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this agenda item via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
Uh, we're back, the meeting is back to order. The comment, are there public comments, City Clerk Kelly?
Assistant City Manager Cortez would have that information.
Okay.
Mayor, there is one comment regarding the COVID update from Dante from someone one. Sorry for the pronunciation there. As a way of helping Imperial Beach landlords, many who are small mom-and-pop property owners, I, um, I think he means recommend you advocate for a suspension of the I B rental unit's business tax. This one hundred and twenty-six per unit annual tax is imposed by and collected by the city, and is something completely within your control. A suspension for the next year would be a great way to compensate I B landlords for the council's recent eviction moratorium for all I B rentals. After all, food is just as important element for survival as shelter, but you, our council members, are not comp- compelling I B grocery stores and restaurants to provide free food through May thirty-first. Until further expected, extended, sorry. There was a letter to the editor that was published in the I B Eagle and Times about the suspension of this tax a couple of weeks ago. See attached. It will be entered for the record. Please help struggling I B property owners who need as much financial assistance as possible to get through this current COVID crisis. No additional comments, Mayor.
The public commentary is now closed, um, and now we have, um, council discussion. We can start with Mayor Protem Agiri. And just to, just for, for the public, we'll start in a reverse order, so it'll be, uh, starting with Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Agiri. Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Mayor Protem Agiri. I just want to thank Assistant City Manager Cortez for the great presentation, and, um, city staff and, and, and all of our residents for, uh, you know, supporting the efforts to, to flatten the curve and to wear masks and to be patient with, uh, all of these different measures that we have either adopted here locally or that have been adopted at the county. As you all know, we were even mentioned as an example to follow the county as far as, uh, you know, distancing behavior compared to other beaches in our state. So I just want to commend, um, city staff for the great work that they've been doing, as well as my colleagues and, and our residents, really, for doing a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sprig, any comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I had kind of a couple, um, questions for clarification to, uh, the Assistant City Manager and, and anyone else. Um, uh, I think this is an important point in, uh, in our, um, in our progress. Uh, I agree with everything Mayor Protem said about, uh, people in I B really collaborate, cooperating with the orders so far. The one thing that can affect that high level of cooperation is confusion. And I just, uh, think we need, um, at least I need, and maybe if I do, there are a couple of other people in the community who do as well, need a little bit of clarification on a couple of things. Um, one, on your slide seven, uh, Erica, where you talk, uh, where you actually talk about the face mask issue. Um, so it's all persons shall wear a face covering when they leave their home or place of residence, okay? And then it says, whenever they are in a business. And then it says, within six feet of another person who's not a member of their family or household. So there's two things that are pretty clear there. When they're in a, in a place of, when they're, when they're in a bus, in a business, or within six feet of another person, that suggests that they don't have to wear a mask at other times, except that that first thing says, when they leave their home or place of residence. So, are people supposed to wear a mask at all times, literally, whenever they leave their home or residence? Or is it really only when they are in, in a business or six feet from another person? So that's, that's the first thing I think we really need to be clear on. Um, and, and I'll let you answer that first, because it, there's another question involving businesses and who's on first regarding that, uh, that I'd like to follow, uh, your answer to that question with.
This is Sprig, yes, thank you for, um, for that information. Again, we follow the orders of the county and, uh, we're confused, as you, when it comes to this, because they're not as specific. I can tell you that on the daily updates that we participate with the county, it's highly recommended and encouraged that people wear their masks, um, as much as possible. The order, and I quote, is in a business or within six feet of another person who is not a member of their family or household, quote. That's exactly out of the county's order, and I agree with you that it is highly recommended and encouraged that people wear it. I think one of the things that the county says, you know, keep it with you at all times or hang it through your neck. And as soon as you, if you're out and about exercising, let's say, on a sidewalk or near people, then put it back, put it on, right? If you're not able to distance yourself. Um, and that's highly encouraged by the county. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, this is, um, it, it kind of does. Um, this is-
Well, I, I think, I, I think, I, I think, uh, City Manager, or Assistant City Manager Cortez, I think it's important to read all of the health order in that section on section nine. It, it doesn't say, I think it's pretty clear. It says, all persons two-year-old or older who are present in the county shall have possession of a face covering. And when, and then it, it says, when they leave their home or place of residence and shall wear their face covering whenever they are in a business or within six feet of another. So in other words, the clarification is here, they should have it in their possession at all time, but when they go into a business or within six feet of another person, then they should have it on. I think, I think it's pretty clear on that whole, it's health order, section nine.
Uh, that's, that's excellent, Councilmember West. I appreciate that. Uh, which leads me to this, uh, the question that now our ordinance or our emergency order has been superseded by the county's. Uh, that's what we're dealing with in this, in this, uh, agenda item. So it's really the county's order that's in effect. Can we post on our website, maybe this is already being done or has been done, um, the, the salient parts of the county order regarding each of these elements? Masks, for example, along the lines that Councilmember West just quoted, so that people can, if, if they're confused, they don't have to sort of search the whole county, uh, you know, website for, for instructions. They can go right to the city and see what masks requirements are being, um, uh, or recommendations are being made by the county. So I, I would hope that we could do that so that everybody has a place to go, uh, on the city website for what the latest is regarding the mask issue. And I have a sma, a, a business issue to ask about as well. Does that make sense, Erica?
Yes, Councilmember Sprig, and Councilmember West, thanks for reading the order and, uh, clarifying that. Um, that information is on our website, Mr. Sprig.
Okay, I, I hope it's as clear as, as, um, as, uh, Councilmember West stated. Um, no, no criticism. I know you're trying to, you know, creating a very, a very abbreviated PowerPoint for the discussion. Uh, and it's just that I was following the power, PowerPoint rather than the, uh, actual county order. Um, second question has to do with what you said about, um, businesses in Imperial Beach and, um, which businesses are, uh, are essential and what rules they have to follow, et cetera. And I'm, and you had indicated that if businesses have a question about that, they, we will refer them to the county. Um, I would hope that we in the county could agree on local guidelines so that they don't have to go to a busy signal number or an automated, uh, number for information. And we might be able to, uh, provide some information to businesses in our community so that they know, uh, which are covered and what their, the expectations are. Um, so I'll, I'll turn it over back to you for, for the, uh, response to that. And Mr. West, Councilmember Matt West, who's been working with- And Mr. West, Councilmember Ma- West, who's been working with the small business community and trying to sort out a number of these with, uh, understandings and deal with questions, et cetera. On the finance side, there may also have been some questions on the regulatory side as well. Over.
If, if, um-
This is, this is-
City Man- Mr. West, do you have questions then, comments?
No, uh, yeah, I just, I just want, uh, Councilmember Spriggs to know that, uh, we just received today, and we will get out to all of the, uh, the businesses, a, the county put out a, what is called their safe, um, I don't think, it's called the Safe Opening Guidance. And it actually covers all of the, um, the requirements that the businesses need to follow for, as we move forward. And it, it is, it is very particular and it is, it has a very, uh, um, a detailed step-by-step list that lays out what they need to do and what their requirements are in their businesses. And we have, we have taken the time to try to educate them, um, our businesses to, to these requirements. And it, it is, it hasn't always been the easiest, but it, but it is something that we are, we are working very hard to make sure that they get out to it. So, um, it's, it is, it, it's not, it's not, it actually acts like a really good checklist. Hey, do this first, boom, you're on to your next one. Do this second. So to help ease some of the, um, the pain, the county did a pretty good job of putting together this document that is, um, it's, it's really two pages long and it, it is, it is pretty easy to follow. And, uh, we'll make sure that it gets uploaded and get it to the city and, and, uh, and we'll get it on the mayor's task force page as well. So, there you go.
Yeah, as long, as long as there's a, a place where businesses can get it, uh, or know that they can get it on the website or, or somewhere else. That, that's my principal concern is that people are always saying, I didn't know this or I didn't know that. And we just need to have that, that central place where there's information, uh, or like a document like the one you're just referring to, that's two pages long, or a referral where people can go for further clarification or questions or both.
Mr. Spriggs, this is Erica, Assistant City Manager Cortez. Um, Councilmember West, thank you again for adding clarification. We should switch, uh, seats. But thanks for adding that. Um, this is, I also understand that you wanted, and, um, and I apologize if during my presentation I misread it. And what I meant is that the definition of essential businesses is very long and detailed for me to cover in my presentation. Um, however, the county, and it's, the situation is very fluid and the county updates the list frequently, if not on a daily basis. Um, we definitely have a section on our website, including social media for COVID-19 and the resources on the task, the mayor's task force. Um, essentially what I was referring to is that there is a, um, e- e- even in the county's order, they don't specify it. They give you a little guidance that anybody who sells food and beverages, they're maybe essential, but in, in, in that case, they're, they're sold to the banks. So, um, again, we will make sure to provide all the updates that we get on the county, from the county on our website and be as specific as possible. Uh, what we were referring to is that we, we can't define that, right? Who is an essential or not? But we can definitely provide some, um, guidance, um, referring it to the website of the county. So they, and, and education, um, and outreach for the businesses so they know, um, you know, who should be in business or not. And referring to Mr., uh, Mr., uh, Mr. West, um, there are definitely protocols in place, um, that are to follow. And yes, um, the, uh, information was just provided within a few, uh, hours ago. And as a matter of fact, they added another layer of who would be doing the soft opening as well. So, um, hope that explains. And if you have any additional comments or questions for me.
Uh, additional comments or we move on, Mr. Patton?
Uh, Patton, yeah, real quick, I'm, I'm, see, Mayor, I should have went first on this one, um, because we could have avoided all of this long, uh, woo, it says lung, um, hello. Um, so, um, so infer, what does infer mean? Infer means read between the lines. So it may not actually say what you have to do, but you have to read between the lines. It's taught in elementary school, middle school, high school, college. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So infer, so, and let me tell you, infer, and then if you infer, what does that mean? It means common sense, okay? And let me tell you, Imperial Beach residents have the most common sense of anybody I know. We've always been kind of the underdog, but let me tell you, and you can tell by their, by our numbers right now, um, we're, we're totally making it, okay? And if we put too many signs up, okay, do this, don't do this, don't do this, do this, do this, don't do that, nobody's going to listen to anything. Um, so I think, like, whatever we put up, make it super general. And like, we, we could go, we could sit for hours and make all these rules, but bottom line is, like, we have to make sure our citizens are safe. Imperial Beach has been dominating this. Um, so my, my thought is, like, as residents are listening, and I know they go on Facebook, is to share whatever you hear and, you know, just make it common sense. Um, and let people infer between the lines. Because there's rules, 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 but what I see in Imperial Beach is following the rules and the numbers show it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Um, I think we've covered everybody. I, I, um, I don't know if I missed anybody. Um, and so thank you all for the comments and feedback. Uh, City Manager Cortez, thank you for that presentation. And our city staff, um, and residents for following the rules. It's clearing the numbers, right? Compared to the rest of South County. So that's, that's, that's good news. Um, I'd like to enter a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-eight. And again, this is Mayor DeDina.
Spriggs, I'll move.
Patton, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Patton, to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-eight. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Protema Gary, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much, everyone. And now we're on item number three, consideration, this is Mayor DeDina, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-seven, updating the Imperial Beach COVID-19 Financial Preparation and Recovery Plan originally adopted by resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen on April one, twenty twenty. City Manager Hall will give the report. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we originally adopted this plan at a previous meeting. And the plan was intended to be updated as more information became available for the city council so that this document's a little bit organic and we are able to keep up with the changes that we are seeing in our financial recovery. If you'll remember, the purpose of the Financial Recovery Plan is to prepare for a reduction in revenue. Uh, we continue to monitor that on a regular basis. We also needed to identify solutions to make up for that general fund shortfall. We need to implement policies and emergency measures because of this unique situation. It was also important that we took a look at the options that we have for the, for a prolonged event just in case this event goes longer than what is anticipated. And we needed to examine those longer-term effects and the, and what that might have, what it looked like on our financial recovery. But there's just one section we wanted to update tonight. If you'll remember, we identified, um, on slide three, we identified the items that would help us make up for the one point seven million dollar shortfall that we are anticipated to see in our revenues. And the one we wanted to update tonight is the one at the bottom of the list, and that was the hiring and spending freeze. Uh, there was a commitment for staff to go back and identify three hundred thousand dollars of reduction in the FY twenty and FY twenty-one budgets so that we could continue to stay with a balanced budget. And we wanted to add some detail to that. Um, so one of the things that we implemented was a soft hiring freeze, which has to do with the personnel issues and that positions that cannot be performed remote, uh, we would probably need to consider layoffs. COVID-19 related impacts, we have some of our employees who are experiencing health issues that should not be, um, in public at this point in time. And so we needed to address those issues. And then there are some unsealed positions that we don't plan to fill at the present time until we know more about the impacts of this, um, crisis. On the soft spending freeze, we talked about the suspension of all training and travel, which has been done. And then we've made some other internal adjustments, um, to the budget to make sure that we do meet that three hundred thousand dollar threshold. So I put this into a little bit of a table so that you can follow it, um, hopefully a little easier than talking about it. In fiscal year nineteen twenty, um, you can see that the first item we closed was our Senior Citizen Center. It's also very likely to be the last id- the last city building that opens. And so right now we have, um, temporary layoffs of our senior citizen personnel. Uh, that's an approximate savings of about ten thousand dollars. Um, the Parks and Tidelines personnel, there are temporary layoffs of eleven of them for various reasons. Um, some of them health-related and, but, but all COVID-related and there's a savings of about fifty-five thousand. There is a fire department personnel that will remain unsealed. Um, the lifeguards, there was some delayed hiring in some of our lifeguards because of the beach closures and that saved us a little bit of money. And then there was a reduction in force, the only reduction in force in, in fiscal year nineteen twenty in the HR, HR department, um, we did reduce a part-time employee and we reduced, so that person will, has been laid off and likely will not be rehired. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, there has been a reduction in force of a part-time person in our finance department. There will be the continued, um, reduction of force in the HR Personnel Department. And then there were some spending adjustments and internal personnel adjustments that, that equaled another sixty-three five, sixty-three thousand five hundred. So you can see there at the bottom of the list that we did attain the savings anticipated of just a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars. Again, um, we had an, an opportunity to be a little bit more detailed with Councilman Spriggs, who heads up this task force for the mayor's, uh, task force on COVID. Um, but because this is in a public meeting, uh, we want to be real careful about names and, and personnel and whatnot, so we didn't include that detail in this presentation. Uh, but we did have a chance to vet it with one of our elected officials and we appreciate his assistance with that. Um, the other thing we should point out is that we are in phase one, um, which was the implementation of the actions in the report. Uh, if we had to move to phase two, we talked about some of the things that we would need to do. And then as you can see in phase three and phase four, those, those changes would become more and more impactful to community services. Um, we have been working very closely, I've been, Councilman Spriggs and I have been working very closely with the Assistant City Manager Cortez and our new Finance Director, Gitmed, to make sure that we are monitoring this information on a daily basis. So far, at least, our, our original prognostication appears to be very accurate. Uh, but we will continue to watch that and a lot of it will depend on the longevity of this emergency event. So with that, Mayor and Council, the, the staff is requesting approval of resolution twenty twenty thirty-seven, which essentially adds more detail to the plan. And, um, inside the, the plan, it, it identifies the, the internal savings of the three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so if you have any questions for me initially, um, I'm here for those. If not, we would be glad to hear any comments that may come in from the public.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hall. I tell you what, why don't we go to, first of all, thanks for that excellent and very concise, but information-filled, uh, report. Appreciate it. Why don't we go to public comment so we can get that out of the way? Um, and then do the council opportunity to speak. So I'm sorry, this is Mayor DeDina. And so now we have a statement from City Clerk Kelly.
This is City Clerk, City Clerk Kelly. Once again, we will take a three-minute recess to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this agenda item via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
Uh, welcome back, everybody. The meeting is back to order. This is Mayor DeDina, the com- I'm sorry, are there public comments?
There are no public comments on this item, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now we'll start with, uh, council questions or discussions, starting with Councilmember Spriggs.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've, I've been involved pretty closely with this. Uh, I don't really have any questions. I'd be interested in hearing if other council members do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I want to also acknowledge your leadership on this from the very beginning. Lots of time spent on this with our city staff. I know we, all our council members really appreciate, uh, how you've taken initiative on this. So thank you. Um, uh, Mr. West?
Uh, all I have to say is great job by all and, uh, yeah, good job. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Yeah, and thank you, um, thank you for the whole team on this because this is a difficult one. I've had many people ask me about this because it kind of runs to people's heart about, right? This work and losing jobs and whatnot. But Imperial Beach has always been, like, so on top of it, not spent money that we didn't have. And, uh, the, the explanation that you guys gave earlier and where we're at right now and where we're heading, I think our employees are very safe and sound. And thanks, that's thanks for all our leadership here in Imperial Beach. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Uh, Mayor Protema Gary?
Yes, I, thank you, Mayor. I just, again, want to acknowledge and, and, and thank, uh, Councilmember Spriggs and Assistant City Manager Cortez, Assistant, Assistant, City Manager Hall for all of the hours of work of the, that they have invested in this plan and how they're continuously and constantly just monitoring and forecasting numbers. I know that regionally, we are an example to follow. I know that there's many other cities that are underwater and that are looking to, um, uh, the city of Imperial Beach to, uh, navigate this, this crisis financially as well. So, uh, I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that's gone into this and, 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 and share with you all that, that I think that our community should feel, uh, good about that and should feel safe, uh, at least when it comes to the institution of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spriggs.
I started off saying I didn't have any, any comments, but I really do appreciate the expressions of confidence that you all have, uh, have made, uh, in the, the city staff and me on, on this, um, on this, uh, work group. So, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, everyone. And I wanted to thank, yeah, again, Mr. Mr. Spriggs, Councilmember Spriggs, thank you so much. Um, and then, uh, to our, uh, City Manager Hall and, and City Manager Cortez, thank you again. Um, and I think the big issue is that this is exactly why you have a rainy day fund or an emergency fund, right? Or the reserve fund. It's for emergen- it's an emergen- this constitutes the very definition of why you have that. Um, so I, I, I'm glad we had fiscal, uh, prudence and just, we're fiscally conservative in how we manage our resources, so we had that, those resources available. Then number two, I think, um, I think we all realize that the more we can do to facilitate accelerating economic investment and development in Imperial Beach, right? Making sure our businesses can open, getting that hotel open, our hotels back open, getting our restaurants back open, uh, will help bring revenues back. And that all depends how well we do on the public distancing and not spreading the disease. That's why this is, that's why that is so closely tied to the economic recovery. Because if all of a sudden the disease, uh, rashes up, up again, excuse me, then we can't, we won't have economic development. because if all of a sudden the disease rashes up again, excuse me, then we can't, we won't have economic development. So that's important. And number three, hopefully, there will be an infrastructure spending bill at some point in 2021. And so that will create potentially sources of investment to invest back in infrastructure in Imperial Beach. So with that, again, thanks, everybody. And I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-37 objecting to the state of Imperial Beach COVID-19 Financial Preparation Recovery Plan and authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to adjust FY 20 and FY 21 adopted municipal budget. Is there a motion?
Aye, done.
Agiri, second.
Thank you. City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Patton, second by Agiri, to adopt Resolution Number 2020-37. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Item number four, Resolution Number 2020-36, requesting Sandag acting as the Setion County Regional Transportation Commission provide advanced funding through debt financing to appropriate the SR75 signal in their connection project and authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum agreement, or MRO, between Sandag and the city of Imperial Beach. Public Works Director Minutelli will give the report. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Public Works Director Minutelli. Moving to Slide 2. What's under consideration tonight is usage of a debt financing instrument to accelerate the construction of an interconnected traffic signal timing and control system on State Route 75. Moving on to Item, Slide 3, background, this is a quick background of the various elements that have put us in what I would consider a very interesting position. SR75 is obviously a primary corridor. It's a route to critical infrastructure for the Navy, other cities. Additionally, recently, the Caltrans relinquished a portion of SR75 that was within Imperial Beach to the city of Imperial Beach. And the recent construction of the U.S. Navy Coastal Campus was another element that ties into this project. Recently, Sandag, the FY 2020 program budget also has provided an opportunity for us as well. I'll explain that further in Slide 4. Sandag, last September, Sandag approved an amendment to their capital program budget. And the map on the left shows all the projects that they talked about, but the picture on the right-hand side zooms in and shows an Imperial Beach DC project 3D there. And below that, this is taken from their program budget, 3D calls out for the SR75 Palm Avenue Operational Improvements Design and Construction Project. They budgeted about 2 million dollars for that, but the funding is not until FY 24 and FY 25. Then we have a series of current events that have taken place. The Imperial Beach Boulevard Enhancement Project, we talked about that earlier. Part of that project was actually the Port District Fiber Optic Infrastructure Project. And you see the picture there to the right is the crews installing the empty fiber optic conduits as part of that project. That's at Seacoast, it looks like, and that, we'll show a map here soon showing where all that conduit leads. Upcoming, we've got an SDGNE Palm Avenue Circuit Upgrade Project that's also going to be happening. That's going to kick off in July, and that project, paired with the Port District Fiber Optic Infrastructure Project Phase 2, is also going to be coming up in FY 21. And then, coming later on, Caltrans is looking to relinquish the portions of SR75 to San Diego, a portion that exists in San Diego to San Diego. Sliding to Slide 6, here's a conduit map kind of showing what's happened and what could potentially occur. The, in pink, shows the Phase 1 of the Port District Fiber Optic Infrastructure Project that we installed empty, multiple empty conduits underneath the IB Boulevard project. You see it runs all the way from the lifeguard facility to City Hall and then points east. It terminates right at our connection to San Diego to the east. Additionally, that conduit also runs up 9th Street and actually makes it all the way to the Public Works Yard as well. And, but at this point, that conduit is empty. SDGNE has a fiber, SDGNE has a circuit upgrade project that's going to be occurring along SR75 and Old Palm Avenue. They'll be starting well to the east of us. They started actually SR75 in Thermal, and then they'll be installing a rather large circuit upgrade project that will be in SR75 all the way through, it's the green item here shown on this certain conduit map. And that project will run all the way to down SR75 through Imperial Beach to the Old Palm, and then it'll traverse north and tie into their, they've got a small substation there at Rainbow and SR75. So that project is planned to start in July of this year, actually. So I'm sure you're all aware of the construction going on on SR75 right now. We've got Calam Water is doing an upgrade to their 100-year-old water line. They're in the roadway now along westbound SR75. Once they're out of the way, and they expect to be gone by June, we can expect SDGNE to do a major project that'll be coming now on the eastbound lanes from San Diego through the town, once again. And this is more tied to the circuit upgrades that they need to do in relation to the coastal campus project. Moving on to Slide 7, really, there's this timing to consider here. We can, the city has a couple options. We can wait until Sandag, you know, funds, puts funds available in FY 24 and 25 for a project that would be related to signal interconnection on SR75. Or we can mobilize now and try to piggyback on these upcoming utility projects and deliver the bulk of the project much sooner and quicker, and quite frankly, cheaper. The SDG project, as we've noted, starts in July of this year, and the Port District Phase 2 project will begin next year. The Phase 2 portion of the project would essentially be where the port is actually pulling the fiber, the actual fiber optic cable through all of their lines, you know, all the lines that were shown on, going back to Slide 6. Phase 2 would actually pull their, those cables, the fiber optics themselves, through these empty conduits. And what we would do is coordinate with the port and negotiate and have those same fiber optic wires pulled through the newly laid conduit that we'd have in SR75 that was part of the SDG project with the eye of having these fiber optic conduits connect directly to our traffic signals, interconnecting all of our traffic signals, and then running that cable all the way to the Public Works Yard here, where we'd actually have a traffic operations center, a computer, or probably a screen, that would help to finally find a way to optimize vehicular travel that occurs on SR75. Moving ahead to Slide 8, staff recommends mobilizing now to take advantage of the cost and time benefits of these upcoming projects. We would recommend utilizing commercial paper debt financing through Sandag to temporarily dedicate a portion of the city's transnet funds toward financing the SR75 signal interconnection project. We would actually kind of delay paying on, the actual payments on that until FY 24, with the idea that at that point, the Sandag funding for the SR75 Operational Improvement Project will come in, and they could reimburse the debt and actually have funding left over on that project. Moving to Slide 9, the recommendation is adopt Resolution 2020-36, requesting Sandag to provide advanced funding in amount of 600,000 for the signaling connection project. Authorize the city manager to sign an MOA between Sandag and the city of Imperial Beach, and appropriate 600,000 dollars to the project budget. Obviously, I went pretty quickly through that, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Really appreciate that excellent report, and really concise, but expertly presented. A really innovative project, and smart, a smart government at its best, and really efficient way of saving taxpayers' money and getting, probably addressing one of the biggest issues in our city. So, Assistant City Clerk Kelly, do we have any time for, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take a three-minute recess to allow the public?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. I meant, go ahead and make your statement, please.
Thank you. This is City Clerk Kelly. Once again, we will take a three-minute recess to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this agenda item via email to comment@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
Great. Welcome back, everyone. Do we have any public comments? Assistant City Manager Cortez?
Mayor, no comments for this item.
Great. Thank you. And so the public comment period is now closed. We will start, any questions or comments from Councilmember West?
Thanks, Eric. Great presentation. Minutelli, it's good to see, I think that, I liked it four years ago, that the signal, the signal interconnection project has always been something that's been a major concern of mine. I mean, the flow of traffic through Imperial Beach, if it's not flu, is a fluid, is a major contributor to pollution and just not having a quality of life if people are unable to easily flow through our city and our residents as well. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. One, we were, I am all for moving this forward in a great way with Sandag and using their, their, their funding. But I, at one point, I was thinking that the city was going to get a portion to a project. Is that something that is not happening? And then, two, I want you to know that all of the work that's being done, Caltrans, I mean, SDGNE, Calmer, I am so happy that you're coordinating that, because that is something that all of us probably see, receive tons of email about, why is this being worked on? So I want to make sure that there are no other projects that are planned that will impact the ferrovia on State Route 75. So there's two questions.
Okay. This is Director Minutelli. Councilmember, you were cutting out quite a bit. That first question you had, did you ask if SDGNE had a project or if the Navy was going to do a project related to interconnect early on?
Sorry, I'm not sure what I'm breaking up, but no, no, no. What I was, what I was under the understanding is that in the past, the Navy was going to help finance the project. I'm wondering where is, you know, when they, when they agreed to do the Naval Coastal Campus, they talked about helping to finance to make sure the flow of traffic was good through Imperial Beach. Did you, Eric?
Yeah, I heard that. Let me, let me answer, let me try to answer that. I've heard those rumors as well. I don't know that I've seen anything very specific that the Navy is required to do a signal interconnection project or pay for a signal interconnection project. I've heard 2040 before, but from what I've seen on the information with the coastal campus, I don't see anything that is quite near as locked in as that. Andy, is there, would you like to comment on that at all?
Yeah, thank you. This is Andy. Thank you for the question, Councilman West. The Navy does have some obligations to help mitigate the traffic and the traffic patterns along SR75, and they have showed us those plans. A lot of those plans are centered actually at Saturn and Palm Avenue, and then also on the freeway interchanges. In terms of the city of Imperial Beach, there is some participation of the Navy. There was making sure that there was ample right-hand turning on the eastbound lanes onto Rainbow Drive and some other improvements. But the signal synchronization, like Eric said, is way out in the future after a whole bunch of studies been done, and it's marked at 2040. We just believe we've got to move that sooner. Mayor DeDina and others have written letters to our congressional people in Washington to see if we could advance that sooner than 2040. We have not been given any commitment that it would be any sooner than that. So we approached Sandag and let them know this is, this is an important thing for us to get done right away. And that's how that project got on the Sandag list of projects for improvement. And that's how we are getting to advance this a little bit quicker than what the Navy would do.
Okay, great. I think, I, what DeDina has, has got control, so that sounds great. And then the second question was, are there any other projects that you, SDGNE or Calmer Water planning that will impact anything going on the signal interconnection project?
Excellent question. This is Director Minutelli again. No, I'm not aware of any other projects that, you know, this, this all started when we started having those conversations with the Navy about the coastal campus, where we were going to be required to do, potentially install a sewer force main along SR75. When that project, the, started, we started putting that out there. That's when we started to hear from the Calams and the SDGs about their projects. At this point, obviously, the sewer project is no longer required. Coronado has completed their sewer line to the north. And at this point, you know, I'm not aware of anything else on SR75 other than the city has drawings for kind of a master planning of, you know, sidewalks and whatnot for SR75. But this wouldn't have an impact on that at this point, but no further projects. I do want to send it back to Deputy, Deputy City Manager Cortez. I think she did get a public comment.
Mayor, this is, this is Manager Hall. I wanted to add to what Eric said. I think one of the things we're trying to do beyond saving some money and trying to do it this way is we don't want to, in the future, have to tear the road up again as well. I think that that's as, that's probably as important to this project as anything else is, since SDGNE is going to be doing work in the right-of-way, let's, let's just take advantage of this, and it saves us tearing up that road one more time.
Mr. West, are you done?
My questions are answered.
I'm sorry.
My questions are answered. Thank you.
Right. I'm sorry, I hear City Manager Cortez, there's a public comment. Do you want to read that now?
Mayor, yes, it actually came in seconds after we closed the public comment. It's not specifically a comment, but more of a question perhaps that can be answered through the council discussion. It's from Dante Pomonton. Is 5G part of the city of Imperial Beach and port rollout with the fiber optics? No additional comments.
Mayor, this is, this is Manager Hall again. The port project does not include any 5G in the community. The port project is only for port facilities and city facilities, and it was a Department of Homeland Security project. So it's not intended for the, for public use at this point.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Patton, do you have comments or questions?
I do. Thank you. Director Minutelli, thank you. I guess since we're on the conduit, the empty conduit, going from Sea Hall to Seacoast, right? And then down Seacoast and down Palm, that being empty. How long do you expect that to be empty? It's kind of like my neighbor digging a pool, and it's like empty. He has an empty pool. So how long is our conduit going to be empty?
Excellent question. This is Director Minutelli. So the, the Port District Phase 2 project is scheduled to begin next year. They're looking at the timing, they'll probably, they're talking in July or so. That, that project would then pull in the fiber optic wires themselves into those condos. They'd no longer be empty at that point, and we'd certainly have connections between, the port, port has cameras and whatnot at the lifeguard facility and tying all the way into City Hall, and then projecting east. And so that, the port project will occur next year.
That's like, almost like the deal of the year, right, getting that done?
We got a, it was a wonderful collaboration between ourselves and the port for that project. Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Thank you for that. And I'm sure you saved us a lot of money. And then going to, on the signal, signal, this is last slide. going to on the signal, signal, word, yes, thank you. I have it written down. I can't even read it. So we're looking at that Phase II. So when we get into that Phase II, and it does go down to Public Works, and then you're going to have a giant box and whatnot there, who's going to be the master that's going to be running that to make sure that thing works correctly? I know we're a long way away, but have you thought that far ahead?
Public Works Director Minatelli again. Yes, I'm certainly thinking about it. I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to have to be talking to our traffic engineer firm, stack traffic. I foresee kind of a computer there that's an adaptive signal system where they, you know, it's almost an AI-type thing where it starts to think ahead about what happens at the signals. For us, the main benefit's going to be finally to have eyes on our signals. We don't really, you know, the existing signal system, especially on SR 75, is kind of a stupid system. It's on timer. I can't tell you right now which one's green, which one's red. If there's, from time to time, there's faults that occur on those, and we don't know, we can't really tell exactly what's going on. But a traffic operations center, we'd have a computer screen up on the wall. We'd know exactly what's happening in each signal. We wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be one person there pushing the button and change the light. It's an automated system, but, you know, as we get closer to that, and I don't think we're as far off, if Council wants to push things forward, you know, a year, a year and a half from now, we'd have something in place, certainly for the signals within Imperial Beach. I think we have to negotiate now with San Diego and Caltrans at some point. I'm sure the overall project envisions getting all the way to the signal at Saturn and the signals that are the onramps to the freeway themselves. This project would actually catch the signal that's at 16th and Palm, that's in, deep in San Diego, but we don't have the conduit going further east yet. But, you know, that would be something we'd be talking about in 2024, 25, to use the remaining funds from that Sandag project to kind of get that done. But obviously, you know, we'd be getting something done for, we'd be getting the bulk of this work done at a fraction of the $2 million estimated at the time.
Councilman Patton, if I could just add to what Eric said, we received word from the city of San Diego today from Councilwoman Moreno's office that the relinquishment of SR 75 through San Diego will be heard by the San Diego City Council, I believe, next Tuesday. I will confirm the date in case council members want to send a letter of support. That would really help a lot of some of the issues we're dealing with on SR 75, and that's welcome news. We've been waiting for that to happen, and pretty glad to see that the city of San Diego is taking that up.
That'd be perfect. And I know it's a long way away, but, you know, just, you know, thinking ahead, like obviously you guys are doing. And I know there's not going to be somebody sitting there hitting the switches, although I would love that job. But what can we do with people calling in? And so down the road, you don't have to answer this, but just down the road, think about like call center glitches. So we get those glitches and handle them immediately, and then it'd make life so much better because that corridor, it's, you know, thousands of cars a day. My next thing is going to, okay, in June, we're going to be switching, Calam is going to be switching from, and they're going to be going east now on Palm Avenue, right? So that's a huge, huge concern for me. Number one, it's going to be backing up traffic all the way down the strand. And because it's probably going to be narrowing down to one lane, and no matter what time they do it. So how are we going to avoid that? And number two, I've been talking about this for two years, and you know exactly what I'm going to say. Why don't we have a right-hand turn lane on heading east on 75, turning on Rainbow, to alleviate some of that traffic? And I understand there's other cars coming out of, over by Cherry, but they know, they know how to dodge and get through that, and there's nothing we could do about that right now. But how can we put that lane in, some asphalt, whatever? I've been waiting two, three years for this to happen, and I keep hearing it's going to happen, and it's not happening. So number one, why isn't it happening? And number two, why isn't it happening?
This is Director Minatelli. I'll answer the first question first. So in June, Calam Water should be complete with their project. They're all the way to Ninth Street now. They've been progressing east from their limits in San Diego through Ninth, and then they're going to connect to the new piping that they've already laid down under Old Palm Avenue, where that, with a crossover at the Delaware Light, essentially. But after, during your correct, at that point, we can expect in July, SD GNE, they haven't told me which way they're going to go, but I suspect that they will start from east to west as well, and they'll start at the thermal and SR 75, and just as you suspected, there will be some lane narrowing. Now, for the bulk of their work, especially out to the east, I think they're going to be having to do some work at night per Caltrans' rules. And then as they're getting further west, they'll come into our right-of-way, and there'll be, as you stated, there'll be some lane narrowing. Now, it's been, you know, one of the side effects of the COVID issue lately is that we don't have as much traffic on our roadways right now, but we can expect that at some point during that project, there are going to be traffic-related impacts from SD GNE, and to do their work safely, they're going to need to close lanes to be able to put their package into the ground. So we'll certainly have traffic control plans from them and assurances between hours of work. We set those. It'll be obviously different for if they're doing work on the eastbound lanes versus Calam's work, and on the westbound lanes tend to start a little later. Eastbound lanes would probably start that work a little sooner and terminate a little sooner so that they're done before the afternoon traffic kicks in. The second question you stated was regarding adding a right-hand turn lane, a free right-hand turn lane at Rainbow, heading, I'll call it west, from Coronado. That project requires, it's not simply adding some pavement and then restriping the roadway. We need, there's a wall that needs to be constructed to support the roadway immediately, I'll call it east of Rainbow. We've brought that project to the Navy as one of the projects we feel needs to be funded as part of their mitigation efforts for the coastal campus improvements, but at this point, the reason it hasn't been constructed is a funding issue.
Okay. So I understand that area, so I'm heading, I'm heading east on Highway 75. I'm going to turn right on Rainbow to make sure everybody's clear. And I understand there's a strip maybe four feet, five feet. I mean, wide enough for a car. Cars go there all the time. But your wheels kind of hit in the side edge. I get it. You need to put some blockage there and build that up. What can we do? Because right now, you just gave me an answer. We're waiting for the Navy, so that's, that's not what we need to hear, because pretty soon, that lane's going to be backed up all the way to Coastal Campus because of the roadwork that's happening, and all these cars could have turned right, 30, 40 cars, to alleviate some of that pain for the people heading east. So I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to give you aspirin right now so we don't have these problems later and all these phone calls.
Yeah, this is Mayor DeDina. I'm looking, I want to make sure I get clarification from City Manager or City Attorney that we're not, this is a specific council item about signalization and appropriating money for that. So I'm not sure if additional roadway improvement projects discussing that, or additional improvements need to be made within the confines of this resolution. So I could get some clarification on that? Because we're talking about multiple different projects now with different agencies?
Right. So this City Attorney line, so yeah, just the council can only take action related to the Resolution 2020-36 on that aspect.
I'm not asking for action. I'm just asking for questions or answers.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that we're...
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay. Go ahead, Director.
Hi. This is Director Minatelli again. I'd like to take a crack at the answer. I mean, as far as that project, it's not, like I said, it wouldn't be a simple, you know, restriping job. It's a thing that needs to be designed, constructed, and engineered and built. And a project like that would simply be something that could be added to the capital improvement program and funded through either transnet dollars or city general funds. We process, just like any other capital improvement project, and that just takes action on behalf of the council.
Okay. So if the Navy's not going to do it, then we're going to have to put it on one of our things, right? That's what you're saying. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Like normally, I don't talk this much. I'm sorry. So thanks for your good answers.
It's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, no, no, it's all really important stuff, so make sure that we're, I was clear about where we're going with that. That's all. And now we have Councilman Cortez Magiri. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just have a quick question relating to projections and expenditures. So Sandag is estimating that our tax revenues will range between $600,000 and $850,000, correct, for the next five years. But was this assessment considering our current situation and reduced revenue? And if that is so, I mean, I'm not part of Sandag, so I don't know if that has been discussed at Sandag, but my concern might relate more to the potential of us coming below the projected minimum, which is $600,000, and then us being, you know, in debt more than we had planned to be.
This is Director Minatelli. Excellent question. So the latest R tip, what we just had approved four items ago, had the most up-to-date projection from Sandag for the transnet program, which is a sales tax-funded program. So they, those numbers that we had in that projection are the latest and greatest within the last month. So they did reduce revenues for the current fiscal year. They reduced them significantly for next fiscal year, and then they put cut about 10% from the following years. So this borrowing is reflective of a reduced, you know, COVID-reduced environment already as far as our revenues projections from Sandag.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Spriggs, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think part of that question, Mr. Minatelli, is the, is the larger amount, the $2 million, and whether that's going to be available. I think our $600 thou is within that. We're borrowing in advance of that, but then there's the also question of being able to complete the project. I don't, I'm not asking that as a question. I'm just sort of trying to clarify that that is also an issue. My questions go to the remaining elephant in the room, because council members have already asked, you know, a lot of the questions I was going to, and that has to do with the signal at Saturn and Route 75, not part of this project, and which is going to, no doubt, require San Diego's support, Sandag's support. Who knows whether the Navy will make good on that obligation? I think we need to document that obligation and confirm with them sooner rather than wait until they're on their third next commander. And to make sure that they realize that we consider them, you know, obligated to support that project, which is probably going to be more complex than the linear signalization along Route 75, I would imagine. The other question I have, or that I'd like you to comment on anyway, is the conduit also covers intersections at Ninth and Ivy Boulevard and 13th and Ivy Boulevard, both of which traffic lights sometimes hold up Ivy Boulevard traffic, backed up even with two lanes when there's very little cross traffic or left-turning traffic. And I wonder whether this can be incorporated into the signalization control system that you're looking at, since the conduit is also going to eventually lead to the, to the Public Works Control Center. Thanks.
This is Director Minatelli. I'll answer the second question first, and you're absolutely right, Councilman Spriggs. We would absolutely be controlling those two signals as well as part of this project, and I agree that those signals also have occasional issues from time to time, but with this, we'd be able to optimize those as well. Going back to your first question, the issue, well, not even the question, the thought you brought up about the $2 million that Sandag has, you know, appropriated out in FY '24 and '25, that is a risk. I think there is a risk involved that those funds, you know, we're going to need to keep on Sandag about those dollars. We've already been having conversations with them about the fact that, you know, we're going to move this project up. We expect those dollars to be there for us later, although we might not need nearly as many, much of them. Probably, at the end of the day, might only need about half of them. For instance, we're taking care of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, potentially eight of the 11 signals on SR 75 that project could possibly address, we're taking care of for around $600,000. That leaves 1.4 million to handle the last signal at Saturn, and then the two, I guess it's only three left, the signal at Saturn and the two signals next to the freeway, the on-ramp and off-ramp ones. Clearly, it's, you know, I think our conversations with Sandag have been very positive. They understand that we're moving this forward for a good reason because we are saving everybody quite a bit of dollars, and at least the bulk of the system will be in place. I agree that at some point in the future, we will be talking to San Diego quite a bit. They need to take the lead and get the rest of the conduit installed to Saturn. We can still run the operations here. We're happy to do it, but the installation of Saturn is probably kind of the key, right? That intersection is extremely busy.
I would just like to second the idea of, that you had mentioned during your presentation of a letter from our mayor or our city manager to San Diego regarding the agenda item that's coming up on their city council agenda for the relinquishment of their part of SR 75. I think that we really should be on record supporting that, and at the same time saying, hey, we're trying to create a thoroughfare here that works for everybody, and we need your, the city of San Diego to step up and be part of that and to collaborate with us once you do have relinquishment of it.
Thank you, Mr. Spriggs. This is Mayor DeDina. Absolutely agree with you, and we will follow up on that. And I mean, I think you know that this is, this issue, and thank you, Mr. Patton, for bringing up these issues with the whole traffic flow and all the different issues related to Highway 75. This has been a delayed project for us regarding, because of funding issues. And I know that Sandag requested that we submit shovel-ready projects for future infrastructure funding, bill funding, and so this is definitely high on that list. But also thanks to thank City Manager Andy Hall and I had met with Asana Crowder, the Executive Director of Sandag, and made this request that we accelerate this project, that it was an easy win, and that it needed to get done. So we'll definitely push with the city of San Diego to get this moving, because nothing is more important for the future of our region between, you know, us and San Diego to make this happen. And this should be a corridor for transit, commercial development, obviously, affordable housing and middle-income housing, as well as improved sidewalks and making more business-friendly, and we can all accomplish that. And then obviously, traffic flow with these. Thank you for using that word, Mr. Minatelli. Stupid, right, absolutely stupid signal. So appreciate that. So with that, and then I want to thank you, Director Minatelli. You brought fresh eyes to this project and a real innovative approach, and saving taxpayers a lot of money to make this happen. So I know we all appreciate you really being innovative and smart, smart to make smart technology really help improve the quality of life in our city. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-36. One, request Sandag to provide advanced funding through debt financing, and number two, appropriate $600,000 to the SR 75 signal interconnection project, and three, authorize the city manager to sign the attached MOA with Sandag. Is there a motion?
Spriggs' motion.
This is West, second.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll, call vote.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, seconded by West, to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-six. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temagiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGina, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank, thank you. Now we have item five, um, approval of Resolution number twenty, twenty, twenty twenty dash thirty-two, declaring the intent to disestablish Imperial Beach Business Improvement District and setting a public hearing for June third, twenty twenty, to consider an ordinance to disestablish the business improvement district. City Attorney Lyon will give the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is City Attorney Jennifer Lyon. As the Council is aware, back in December of twenty nineteen, the City Council directed staff to take all necessary actions to disestablish the Imperial Beach Business Improvement District. That process is a multi-step process, and back in February of twenty twenty, before the COVID-nineteen pandemic hit, the Council did adopt a resolution of intent to start the process, and the city mailed notice to business owners that there would be a March eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty public hearing to disestablish the BID and allocate the funds. However, due to the COVID-nineteen emergency, the March eighteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting, and thus the BID disestablishment public hearing was canceled. So staff had to restart the process over again. Uh, there was another resolution to start the process adopted at the April fifteenth, twenty twenty council meeting. Tonight, this is a new resolution, it has been revised, revised for the city's administration of the BID disestablishment, and will allow the process to start over, to be complete in June of twenty twenty. The new resolution before the council tonight will supersede and rescind the prior resolutions of intent adopted by the council in February and April. The resolution before the council tonight provides that all remaining revenues from the bid assessments will be refunded to the businesses. But please be advised that tonight's action is not the final action to disestablish the bid or to refund any of the funds. The city council's final action with respect to the distribution of the funds and the disestablishment will be heard at the June third, twenty twenty, public hearing. Adopting this resolution tonight just starts the process over again, and I'm available for questions if there are any. Thanks.
Thank you, City Attorney Lyon, for that excellent and concise and clearly delivered report. Appreciate it. Um, we'll go to public comment. Um, City Clerk Kelly will have the statement.
Once again, we will take another three-minute recess to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this agenda item via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
I'm calling, this is Mayor DeGina, calling the meeting back to order. Assistant City Manager will tell us we have public comments. If you so, can you read them, please?
Mayor, yes, we do have two comments related to this item. They're both lengthy, so I'm going to only read the first a hundred words, and then the rest will be entered for the record. Comment number one, from Eric Alawi. I am personally offended by the comments made by members of the city council about the Chamber of Commerce. I know others on the Chamber Board of Directors feel the same. Also, I find it ironic that you insist Sweetwater School District pays for services that the city has rendered, yet you are not considering the prior services that the Chamber of Commerce has done on behalf of the BID meeting the same requirement. And in actuality, your, your body in the previous sessions has already approved the payments of the forty-five thousand due to the Chamber for services to the BID. The Chamber numerous times has been called out for not being present during meetings when I, for one, have been either seated in audience, or now that physical participation is not permitted, are on the call. Comment number two, from, this is, um, from the entire Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. I have known facts as far as twenty sixteen to the minute, and it shows that the ID has not even brought a budget to the city until close to December of that year. As of today, a budget was presented in July or August of two thousand and seventeen by Tracy Rivera. That was not accepted by the Board of Directors to the Imperial Beach Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Rivera has changed the terms of the BID budget and taken funds from the Chamber to use for items not included in the article's allowable uses. Ms. Rivera refused to work with the treasurer, Mike Offorn, to come to an agreement on the budget. Ms. Rivera sent the budget to the city for review, and it was not accepted, nor has it been accepted as of today. We just received another comment. Comment number three, from Dante Pamanthuan. I would like to acknowledge the outstanding leadership of Valerie Acevez, Imperial Beach Chamber President, and the Board of Directors for the duties as servant leaders in our Imperial Beach business community. The best is before us. No additional comments, Mayor.
Great, thank you. The public comment period is now closed. Um, we will start, Councilmember, questions or discussion with Mr. Patton. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, and I appreciate, uh, people making comments right now. Uh, I, I just think truthfully, it's the perfect time for us to move forward and, uh, get on a level playing ground, and, uh, we can, uh, make this bigger and better for the whole city. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Pro Temagiri.
No comment at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Spriggs, any comments or questions?
I don't have any comment. I think the, it would be great if we could be in full open session for the hearing, uh, that's coming up next month, but, um, you know, if that's not possible, we'll do the best we can, uh, on the phone. No, no further comment.
Thank you, Mr. West. Councilmember West.
Yeah, I, you know, I, the one thing I wanted to say is that I agree with, uh, Councilmember Spriggs. I think, you know, it'd be really important if we can move to a more virtual meeting. I mean, I think the reality is, is that we are, we're gonna be dealing with this for a long time, and being able to, to make sure that our, our citizens are seen and heard is really important in the future. So I, I think that's important. And I, I, now that I've waded into the, the business task force and seen both sides of the issue, I definitely think that, uh, this is the right way we're gonna go forward, but I definitely would love to find out ways to, to make more microloans available for our businesses in the future. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. West. Um, now I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty, sorry, this is the mayor, twenty twenty dash thirty-two, stating the intent of the city council to disestablish the Imperial Beach Business Improvement District, and provide notification of required public hearing to gather the other technical requirements. Is there a motion?
Spriggs moves.
Aguirre-
Councilmember West, second.
I think I heard Councilmember Aguirre, second.
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll, call vote.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, seconded by Aguirre, to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-two. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Temagiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you. Now we have the final, uh, item for the evening, and that's item number six, Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the City of Imperial Beach and the Sweetwater School District to conduct a school resource officer program for fiscal year of twenty nineteen dash twenty. City Manager Hall will give the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before the city council is Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine. An adoption of the resolution will authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with the Sweetwater District. It'll create an agreement, uh, for just FY twenty, which is ending on June thirtieth of twenty twenty, um, and we are not seeking at this point a, a second year on that agreement. But what this essentially will do is allow Sweetwater to provide ninety thousand dollars to offset a portion of the school resource officer program for the year that we are just now concluding, which will again conclude on June thirtieth of this year. Uh, the future of the school resource officer program is in negotiation and still under consideration, and we will report further to the city council in the future. At the last meeting, the city council asked us to, uh, meet and talk with the City of San Diego. We were able to meet with Councilwoman Moreno and talk about what is happening in the City of San Diego. Um, at the current time, the high schools in the San Diego portion of the district, uh, do not have school resource officers. Um, and so just wanted to make sure that the council knew we did get a chance to talk with her. Uh, she was very helpful, um, really wants to, to work with us on what we can do to protect the youth in the community. Um, and we will continue to have discussions with the principal of the high school, the school district, and Councilwoman Moreno as we continue to explore the best options for this program. Um, again, if there's no questions of me immediately, um, we will, um, wait to see if there's some public comment on Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate, uh, your work on this. Um, so now's the time for public comment, and City Clerk Kelly will make a statement.
Once again, we will take a three-minute recess to allow residents to submit any questions or comments by email. Please submit comments on this item, agenda item, via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Assistant City Manager Portez, do we have any, um, public comments?
No comments for this item.
Great, thank you. Um, we'll start with, um, I think your, I think it's Councilmember Spriggs now, right? Public comment?
Yes.
Do you have a city comment?
Uh, okay, I'll go. I thought it was maybe Council, uh, Mayor Pro Temagiri, but, um-
Oh, you're right. Never mind. You're right. I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, it is my, my Pro Temagiri. Sorry.
This is me.
Yeah, it's Spriggs.
This is Mayor Pro Temagiri. Um, well, I think that, what I want to say is that we all know that schools need to have protection and have a liaison. I, I just, um, I agree with our intent to fulfill our commitment to FY twenty. Uh, and I would hope that moving forward, we can explore alternative, uh, options, whether that looks, uh, like working with our sheriff deputies, uh, having, uh, a deputy that could be a liaison for our schools, uh, maybe even someone that could, uh, be, uh, or have some sort of expertise, um, when dealing with youth, so that, um, that, that, that would be my preference.
Thank you. Councilmember Spriggs.
Thank you. Um, similarly, I, I think we should go ahead. I mean, otherwise, we'll forfeit the ninety thousand dollar contribution, um, uh, Sweetwater Union School District, which would be, um, imprudent, to put it nicely. Um, I think that going forward into the next fiscal year, or we should be planning for it now, and, um, I, I had this conversation during a briefing session with the city manager, and I'll just, uh, reveal my comment to everybody. Uh, I think that, uh, it would be good if we could get input from Mar Vista, uh, as to the value, the amount of time that the, uh, officer is present, the value, the extent to which there's an impact on student behavior, uh, so that we can gauge what the absence of such an officer, uh, what that impact would be if, if we decide that this is not something we want to continue to fund and incorporate it into our, our budget planning in this budget crisis that we're in as well. Uh, I think we need to have those facts, uh, you know, when we, to make an informed decision about the, the value of this service as seen from the school's perspective and the student's perspective. So, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, at some, uh, when we start considering the budget, which is just next, next month, we're gonna have to adopt it, or adopt an amended bu- budget for FY twenty-one, uh, that we'll have that information available to us. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West, any comments?
Yes, please. Um, this, this is a question for, uh, City Manager Hall. When you had a conversation with, um, Councilmember Moreno, did she talk about how long that the San Diego schools have not had a, uh, resource officer on their campuses?
She probably did, but I don't recall. Um, to be honest, I, I, I don't have a recollection of that.
Okay. I'm just curious. I mean, it is, is a, um, we obviously have a much significant, significantly lower crime rate than San Diego, and I'm just, I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I know we're dealing with budgets here, but I'm wondering the impact of the SRO, especially with these migrating between, uh, different campuses as well. So, I, I am, we're entering, we're entering a budget, um, that is probably never been experienced by anybody. Um, this is gonna make the two thousand and eight recession, um, laughable in many ways, and I'm, I'm, uh, I think this highlights what I am most concerned with in our city, and is that is really the rising cost of their sheriffs, and it is a, it's something that we continue to talk about, but it's, it, it is almost like the sheriff has the city handcuffed to where we have to do something, um, that they want us to do, even if it bankrupts our city. So I think that is, this is a conversation that needs to happen on, um, the SRO is just one portion of our sheriff contract, or one portion of this, our sheriff contract needs to be looked at at all levels. So, um, I, I obviously agree with, we should move forward, because it'd be, it would be, uh, um, this is just until the end of the year. Obviously, this is something we wanna, we don't wanna lose the money, so let's go ahead and, and, uh, ex- execute and move forward, but I really believe that as we move forward, that the overall picture of safety needs to be addressed. And not safety in something that is, that is just looked at from what we, we are getting, but more of a, um, is it really the fit for our city based on the financial realities of the future? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Patton, any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I think it's perfect, you're ending with a educator that's been doing it for twenty, twenty-eight years. And, Mr. West, I do value always your, uh, comments and your opinions, but the sheriff, uh, contract is not gonna affect that, uh, but it, it's big, right?
Um, so let me start, uh, two-phase, uh, comments here. Uh, the first phase, I'm gonna talk about the elementary school edge of this, you know, the, the South Bay Union School District, who's always been there for us, and they've always pretty much kept up to their part of their, um, bargain. The school safety, uh, resource officer, they help out with safety, safety patrol. So every time you see the kids out there with, uh, their, their signs, their stop signs, their red jackets, and whatnot, that officer, at least the school I work at, takes part in making sure that these kids are in line, they, they promote kids from sergeant to lieutenant, they, it's, it's a big deal. And pretty much each school handles its own deal, but the officer kinda gives it a little reality to the kids and a little, um, you know, ma- makes it real for the kids. So that's one big part. We have to make sure that the elementary schools are gonna continue to do their safety patrol. continue to do their safety patrol and, in a, in a manner. And I know, uh, Lu- Lieutenant Marquez is going to follow through on this, and I'd be happy to help him follow through on this. But I, I don't think it's, I think that's a no-brainer. Uh, but now we look at the high school, and what exactly does the officer do? You know, I talked to my son who goes to high school, and my daughter who goes to high school, and really, they don't know. Um, however, but maybe this officer could be somebody that goes in there who does some training with, uh, the staff, right? Or is it somebody that's just seen once in a while? And could I, our sheriffs do that? Yes, but do we have confirmation that our schools are being trained in active shooter events? I train people on active shooting events, and I want to make sure that we have our safety officer in, in act, in there, because once it, one happens, we're like, man, it'd be nice if we would have had an officer, right? And of course, we can call officer, you know, a sheriff, you know, as in, like anybody else, but this officer is very, very important. I think right now, I think the way we're going with this, we just go, but I don't think we let it go and say we'll never do it again. So I think Sweetwater definitely needs to step up and, uh, follow through and make sure that, number one, they have training for active shooting events, and number two, they have an officer there helping them out. And that's all I have.
Thanks, everyone, for those comments, appreciate it. So, uh, and thank you, Mr. Hall, I know you want, you were giving the direction to go back and address this, and you did, so we appreciate that, that extra effort on behalf of the taxpayers and, and residents and students, uh, in Imperial Beach. So, anyway, enter a motion, I'd like to enter a motion to adopt, this is Mayor DeGina, enter a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, authorizing the city manager to execute an MO, memorandum of understanding between the city of Imperial Beach and the Sweetwater Union High School District to operate a school resource officer program for fiscal year twenty nineteen dash twenty. Is there a motion?
So moves, Spriggs.
I didn't hear a second. Back to West. Okay. Uh, City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote. This is Mayor DeGina.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by West, to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-nine. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Protemogiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Um, just before we adjourn, thank you, everyone, uh, great meeting. Before we adjourn, were there any additional comments received via email?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks to you all, and if, uh, with that, we adjourn the regular meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty. Thank you, everyone.